I'm going to call this meeting the Oskaloosa City Council to order. Today is Monday, December 5th, 2016. Let's start with the invocation by Pastor Don Stripling, First Presbyterian Church.
Thank you. It is a privilege to be here this evening and to call on God's blessing on you and your work. I want to first say that I personally appreciate the fact that you give up your time and effort to do this work. It is tremendous. This evening we're going to have a blessing, and so as blessings go, you're invited to have your eyes open and hopefully receive the blessing of God Almighty. Truly may the one God who created all of Oskaloosa's citizens, residents, and visitors, and calls each of us to care for one another as we care for ourselves bless this council as you seek to provide for our welfare, our safety, and our prosperity. May God bless you with joy and sense of purpose and accomplishment, all who serve our city, those who are just joining our ranks, and those who have demonstrated through faithfulness in long years of service. May God, who is the source of all wisdom, grant you this evening discerning minds as you deliberate the issues that are before you, and bless you with empathy for those involved, reminding you that behind every decision you make are children of God who are relying on your good and equitable judgment. And as you seek candidates for our city's boards, commissions, and agencies, may God guide you to the people within our city whom God has blessed with the gifts necessary to enrich the work of those committees, and to give each of you, each one of you that you call, a willing heart to respond, and cause their contributions of time, talent, and insight to be a blessing to the entire city. And may God bless all the decisions that you make this evening, that they may resolve in building up our city, strengthen trust among all of its residents, and cause everyone who hears of Oskaloosa to recognize that we have been blessed by the Lord God Almighty based on the fruits of the efforts of this council. To God, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, be the glory forever. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Could you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Burnett?
Here.
Calgery?
Jimenez?
Moore?
Here.
Versteg?
Here.
Wally?
Here.
Gates?
Here.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the swearing-in of new police officer Jordan Ammons. The information provided to the council, I'll go ahead and read that out. The Police Department has completed the necessary work to fill their vacancy. Jordan Ammons is the newest police officer. Officer Jordan Ammons grew up in Knoxville, Iowa, graduated from Knoxville High School in 2007, and after graduation, he attended Simpson College and was part of the wrestling program for four years. He received a BA degree in physical education and coaching in 2012. In his free time, he enjoys being outdoors with his Husky or spending time with his family, and he enjoys keeping an active lifestyle. He began his career in criminal justice as a correction officer at the Newton Correctional Facility in June of 2016, and is looking forward to continuing his criminal justice career with the Oskaloosa Police Department. So would Jordan Ammons please step forward? And if you would, stand right over here and face me. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jordan Ammons.
I, Jordan Ammons.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and comply with.
That I will support and comply with.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Iowa.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Iowa.
The Charter, laws, and ordinances of the city of Oskaloosa.
The Charter, laws, and ordinances of the city of Oskaloosa.
The rules and regulations of the Oskaloosa Police Department.
The rules and regulations of the Oskaloosa Police Department.
The law enforcement code of ethics.
The law enforcement code of ethics.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of my position as police officer.
Discharge the duties as my position as a police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. You're on board. We need to talk about this. So. If I could get you to sign right up there. Very good. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Long as I am up here, we also have some longevity plaques that we would like to present. A number of employees have been here for what we would call milestone times. And so first off, I'd like to have Mark Knapp step forward. This is a plaque of recognition to Mark Knapp, and the way it reads is "For 20 years of service to the city of Oskaloosa as an employee of the fire department." Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you.
Craig Alexander, would you please step forward?
The plaque reads "For 30 years of service to the city of Oskaloosa as an employee of the police department." Craig, congratulations.
Nikki Witt. You know, some folks are busy all the time.
This employee recognition is awarded to Kim for 35 years of service to the city of Oskaloosa as an employee of the City Clerk Engineer Public Works Department. So, Kim, congratulations.
You know, we hand out these plaques with, you know, with the recognition that we do. You know, so you've got 20 years, 25 years, 30 years, 35 years of service to the city. And, you know, as you reflect back on that, you know, the mayor is a unique position where you start to understand that your success in being in a position such as mine depends on people that are in positions such as theirs, that they are the face of the city of Oskaloosa. And so it shouldn't come as much of a surprise to people that the jobs that the city has from time to time are not entirely pleasant. Police departments have had some attention lately, fire departments, street departments. I think back on the advertisement that came with my shingles, that every day is a bad day for your roof. Well, you know, I think it's probably even worse if you're a street department guy who's out there facing the elements, and you're not built out of asphalt, for goodness sakes. You know, and so even in the city clerk's office, that when folks come in, they're not there because they're having a great day and just wanted to wander in, they've got something on their mind. And it's the patience and professionalism of the personnel of Oskaloosa that makes this council and folks in my position able to be successful. And so from time to time, a plaque is a good thing to have. It's something that you can put on the wall and know that that appreciation is there. But perhaps it's just a thankfulness from us that goes day by day, and we don't get around to saying it often enough. So, thank you very much again. So at this point, I wish I could just go home because I'm feeling real good. Next item on the agenda is the opportunity for community comments. These are to receive comments from the community, whether or not they're on the current agenda. The community is encouraged to come and speak before the mayor and city council. We do ask to keep statements brief. Time is limited to no more than three minutes. Any questions that are to be asked of the city staff, the council members, or the mayor, we ask that you ask those prior to speaking to the full council in an open meeting, so that way we can properly research it and probably get those questions answered away from the meeting. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and city council only. Is there anyone who would like to speak today? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next item is the consent agenda. Let's see. These are all items that are pretty much routine in nature. They'll all be handled by a single motion. I did want to draw your attention to item D, where we're considering a resolution scheduling a public hearing for January 3rd, 2017, to consider levying a special assessment against a private property for nuisance abatement in accordance with Iowa Code 384.60, and then putting, directing notice to the owners of the property just to be assessed. Everything else I thought was pretty much routine. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Burnett?
Yes.
Calgery?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Next item is the announcement of various vacancies that we have on boards and commissions. First is the Airport Commission. We have one vacancy to fill. It's upon appointment for an unexpired term ending on December 31st of 2021, and one vacancy for a six-year term that begins on January 1st, 2017, ending on December 31st of 2022. It's a five-member board that typically meets on the first Monday of the month. We have four males and no females currently serving. Next is the Board of Adjustment. We have two vacancies for five-year terms that begin on January 1 of 2017, and they end on December 31st of 2021. It's a five-member board that meets as needed. Currently, we have five males serving. Next is the Civil Service Commission. There's one vacancy for a four-year term that begins on April 1 of 2017 and ends on March 31st of 2021. It's a five-member board that meets as needed with, excuse me, three, yeah, three-member board that meets as needed, three males and no females currently serving. Next is the Historic Preservation Commission. Five vacancies. One vacancy to fill upon appointment for a term that ends on December 31 of 2018. Two vacancies for three-year terms that begin on January 1 of 2017, ending on December 31st of 2019, and then two vacancies for alternate members. It's a seven-member board with two alternate members that meets as needed. Currently, we have four males and two females serving. Three vacancies, two for alternate members. The next is, and last, is the Municipal Housing Agency. There's one vacancy to fill upon appointment for an unexpired term ending on February 28th of 2017, and one vacancy for a two-year term that begins March 1st of 2017, ending on February 28th of 2019. It's a five-member board that meets quarterly. Two males, two females currently serving, and there's one vacancy. Getting into the regular agenda. First is to consider an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Oskaloosa that would change minimum lot requirements in the R1, R2, and R3 zoning districts. This is the second reading. The Oskaloosa Municipal Code defines the distinction between a duplex, which has two dwelling units on a single parcel, and a single-family attached dwellings. That is, a structure with two dwelling units with a property line dividing the two units into two separate properties. In Table 17.08(c) and 17.22030, the Oskaloosa Code defines separate zoning regulations for each of these two residential uses. This distinction and separate regulation has been the cause of confusion when structures are built as duplexes and then split into two parcels, thus converting them into single-family attached dwellings. So to provide clarity and remove regulatory burdens in developing these types of residential structures, the Planning and Zoning Commission on their, at their October 18th, 2016 meeting approved recommended changes to 17.08(c) and approved deletion of the following section of the Oskaloosa Municipal Code, namely saying, "Single-family attached, when permitted, the minimum side yard opposite the common wall shall be equal to twice the normal required side yard." So if all proposed changes are adopted, single-family attached homes will be permitted on all lots where duplexes are currently permitted. And additionally, the vast majority of existing parcels in the R2 and R3 zoning districts will meet the minimum lot requirements for new single-family detached homes. Overall, these changes are intended to reduce the burden on home builders and residents pursuing new infill developments while preserving the existing character of the city's older neighborhoods. Oskaloosa City Council held a public hearing on this ordinance at its meeting for the ordinance on November 21st, and subsequently passed the first reading of the ordinance. Do we have anyone willing to motion for passing the second reading?
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Calgery?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Calgery?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Next is to consider an ordinance amending the Oskaloosa Municipal Code, Section 13.08.190, and that considers two-family dwellings as separate buildings for the purpose of sewer connections. This item corresponds to the preceding item in the agenda. Presently, there is ambiguity in the Oskaloosa Municipal Code as to whether it's permitted for a duplex, that is, two attached dwelling units on a single parcel, to be constructed with a single shared sewer connection. If the duplex is split into two parcels, it becomes a single-family attached dwelling, namely, two attached dwelling units with a property line dividing the two units into two separate parcels, and it becomes clear that each unit must have a separate sewer connection. The proposed ordinance clarifies that each unit in any two-family dwelling, whether it be a duplex or single-family attached, requires its own sewer connection as follows, quote, "A separate and independent building sewer shall be provided for every occupied building except where one building stands at the rear of another on an interior portion of said lot, and no sewer is available or can be constructed to the rear building through an adjoining alley, courtyard, or driveway. In such cases, the building sewer from the front building could be extended to the rear building, and the whole considered one-building sewer." And so the new part, a new, excuse me, a two-family dwelling shall be considered two separate buildings for the purpose of this code. This was passed, the first reading and hearing was done on the November 21 meeting. Do we have a motion supporting this?
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion on the second reading? Roll call, please.
Moore?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Calgery?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Going on to item 10. These are items that have been submitted from council members to the city manager for discussion and possible action. Item A is to the council review of a denied building code variance. The description on it is to consider that the city council may grant a variance to the Oskaloosa Municipal Building Code after the Board of Adjustments. And the explanation says, "Given the fact that a code cannot apply to every situation 100% of the time as intended, this may cause unintended or unforeseen problems with a code that lies outside the powers and duties of the Board of Adjustments to correct. This process creates an appeal review for an applicant to the city council that could approve the variance after the Board of Adjustment has denied it." And so the recommendation in here is that at the request of the applicant of a denied variance, they have the right to place the denied variance on a city council agenda. City council would review and may grant the variance pertaining to the Oskaloosa Municipal Code. This was brought by Aaron Versteg and Tom Jimenez. Tom, of course, is not here tonight. Aaron, do you have anything to add?
I think we discovered that this wasn't legal, right? Mike, isn't that what we're saying?
American Council correct. The state statute is pretty clear on what the council can and can't do with appeals from the Board of Adjustment. Items from Chapter 17, review of the realm of role and responsibility of the Board of Adjustment. The council can't act as an appeals board, per se, after a decision is made. However, if a variance is granted, the council can, in fact, remand that back to the Board of Adjustment, only in that circumstance.
Okay.
And again, to be clear, that's a state code, not one of our codes that we could change.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So I don't think there's anyone making the motion for it, so why don't we have the minutes reflect that this dies for lack of a motion?
So we're also questioning the sidewalk. Is that correct?
Yeah, it kind of tangentially related to it. It was one of those things where Councilman Versteg had asked me a question, and that's when it dawned on me that I wanted to take a step back from this process, look at things differently, and yes, I have some concerns about the sidewalk ordinance that was just passed by council for the same exact reason. The council, that particular ordinance is in Chapter 17, and again, just like this last item, 17 is supposed to be appealed only to the Board of Adjustment, not the city council. So I did, in fact, seek legal counsel's opinion on that, and there's a recommendation that we revise that ordinance, and so I'm going to work on some options for the council to consider in the near future.
Thank you. But I mean, that code that we voted on is not in effect, then?
No, it is. I would just say that the appeals portion is not allowed.
They can't vote.
They can't. I don't see that being an issue right now because I don't see anybody coming in to disturb the property or to come and affect us, but I was doing work through that issue and telling them that something is going to be changed with that particular thing.
I would think we'd have to go back to the very first reading and start all over again and rewrite it.
Yeah, anything that was proposed.
We voted on what we've seen on paper. We've changed it about three times, and I don't even think that's legal, but I'm not the lawyer. But we changed it three times. We had two first readings, never went to the public with the second first reading, like we did the first first reading, changed it again for the second reading, and now we're wanting to change it again after it was voted on. I just don't think the whole thing is legal. I think we have to go back to square one.
And Aaron, I would think too, if I can jump in here quite frankly, that might be productive to do so because, as I recall, the conversations, I know, for example, Scotty, I think, had premised her vote on the issue on having something like that in there, and obviously, we suddenly say, okay, that ordinance is enforceable except for this one section that's illegal. Once again, that's not really the premise council was supporting it based on, so it probably would be fair to reconsider from square one.
Thank you.
Moving on to item B. This is also brought from, requested by Aaron Versteg and Tom Jimenez, and it is to, it's a revarding title of "Council Review of Possible Exemption Status for Auxiliary Structures" under the 2009 International Building Code. So in the line here, discuss, or consider that the city council may revise frost footing requirements to grant exempt status to auxiliary buildings on residential private property as governed by the 2009 International Residential Building Code, specifically, Section R403.1.4.1, restricting all buildings to 600 square foot. Currently, under the 2009 International Residential Building Code, it restricts all structures in excess of 600 square foot to pour frost footings of at least 44 inches deep. This proposal would exempt auxiliary buildings on residential private property from frost footings used for storage and upkeep of maintained property. So the request is to exempt residential auxiliary buildings from that building code section. Aaron, do you have anything to add, or what's the story behind this?
Well, there was two proposals, really. I'll pass this one out, too. This is the one that I really wanted to get in here. I gave Mike the wrong one, basically. But I would like to just open it up for discussion for both of you.
Okay.
Doesn't necessarily require a vote tonight.
Okay.
Because Tom isn't here.
Yeah, well, yeah, so as far as you know, was Tom on board with this proposal?
Yes, he was.
Okay. Why don't we give the council a chance to read through this? Is there a copy available for the viewing audience, or some other way that they can know?
I don't know. I just don't want, what I have here.
Okay. Well, I don't want to, okay, I'll write, read the thing out. Okay, so, okay, so instead of saying 600 square, let's see here. Currently, under the 2009 International Residential Building Code, it restricts all structures in excess of 600 square foot to pour frost footings of 44 inches deep. Proposal would exempt auxiliary buildings on residential private property from frost footings used for storage and upkeep of property maintenance under the following restrictions. One, the auxiliary building being used for storage and upkeep is not being used as a dwelling living space. Example is a detached apartment or single-family home. Number two, auxiliary buildings shall be limited to 1,000 square foot or approved by a certified structural engineer if larger than that. Three, the roof height may not exceed 12-foot, not including non-structural decorative accessories or approved by a certified structural engineer indicating it is within load limits. Non-structural examples may include but not limited to cupolas or weatherveins. Okay? Yeah, since this wasn't released with the 24-hour notice, we can't take any action on it, so would it be your desire just to discuss it at this point?
That's basically what I'd like to do, yes.
Okay.
Do you want to table it until next meeting?
Or table it until next meeting if you want to.
Well, I mean, we can table it for action. As it is now, we wouldn't anyway.
Right.
You know, if you'd like to converse on it, we can do that, or if you would like to not even do that, we can do that.
Somebody had, I'd like to open it up if somebody's got some questions that I'd like to ask.
And Aaron, it might conceptually be cleaner, once again, if the discussion were moved up to, just to the extent that anybody who's seen the agenda in advance, or anybody who might show up tonight for comments, obviously would not have seen this in advance and been prepared or anything.
So you think it would be better off the table?
I think it would be cleaner.
Okay. Okay. Why don't we go ahead and do that? Yeah, I guess we don't need to have anything regarding a motion, do we?
Is this item even, they're totally separate now, right? They're completely different.
Yeah.
We don't want to discuss this one.
Right.
Would we even table it? What's this? Would this one just die for lack of a motion?
Yeah, the first one died for lack of a motion. The second one.
Let's be a one.
Yeah.
What, you'd be tabled, you're not?
Yeah. See, the thing that's giving me some confusion is that it's not a legal part of the agenda in the first place, so why don't we say that the mayor ruled it as out of order, and then proceed on?
Mike, did you have some comments you'd like to make before we did this? I seen you as discussing something over there.
The only comment I would make is that, I mean, the second document that was handed out is still discussing within the same code section.
Right.
The items on the agenda, so I don't know that I, I don't have, I'm not the attorney and I, I don't have as much heartburn as some others do about that. I would just say to the council, we have not spent any time reviewing this whatsoever. We didn't prepare the agenda item, we haven't prepared the last two agenda items. And so I had told Aaron, Councilmember Versteg, that we weren't going to do anything with it until council gave me direction to start working on it, because if I had, I would have stopped the other things that I was working on to make this a priority, and without consensus from council, I didn't have that. So that would be the only additional comments that I have.
Okay. So why don't we do this? Yeah, we'll rule it as out of order for tonight, knowing that this will come back at the next meeting. In the meantime, I guess I would be interested, you know, what structural engineers would say to this as far as, or any other person with an engineering background, as to why the frost footings are a desirable thing in a 600-foot structure to begin with, so we know kind of the why. I, you know, the rest of the council may be knowledgeable on such things, but I'm not. Okay. So moving on in the agenda.
Can we add a, it's a good point, but I'm, I know we don't want to discuss it, but I don't agree with it as it is, but there's some things that aren't explained. Now, do we just wait until later for this?
I would say yes. Moving on, reports from city staff. City manager, anything?
No, I guess I would just say that for the public benefit, the city council held a study session tonight at 5:00 to review rate analysis and rate structures for the sanitary sewer system. We did not have anybody from the public meetings, other than maybe one or two members of the press. Our plan as presented sticks with the rating pieces that we proposed and shared last year, and I believe possibly the year before, but for sure last year. We are, in fact, being mandated to complete varying capital-intensive projects in the form of disinfection at our wastewater treatment facilities, and we have to remove rainwater from our sanitary sewer system, commonly referred to I&amp;I infiltration. That accounts for over $10 million of projects that must be completed in the next three years. And so it's a rather large endeavor, and council had a good conversation about it tonight. This is just, I guess, fair warning again for the public, we've been talking about this for at least five years, that these projects are becoming tight, and now's the time, actually, next this year will be the time to actually get really moving on those projects. We've been doing a lot of studies, but next year is when we anticipate issuing debt. We've been doing a lot of study work, but next year is when we anticipate issuing debt. Of course, that'll take another council action, discussion in the future, but I thought it would be a good idea to share that conversation for during this meeting. That's all I have.
Okay. City clerk, anything?
No, sir, thank you.
City attorney, anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Well, city council member, Steve, anything?
Just wanted to thank the folks that are responsible for lighting up the square. I just think that's a beautiful, beautiful thing. I've seen a lot of, a lot of talk on social media about it. I like the, and then the folks that continue to do the parade, whoever are responsible for that, they should get kudos as well. It's quite an affair to do, and, you know, just to watch the kids at night, I was at the parade, and I have more fun watching the kids watch the parade than I do the parade, I think. So it's kudos to the folks that are involved in that. It's good for our community, so thank you.
Tom?
As you know, I'm on the emergency management commission, and it's budget time for them. There'll be a meeting coming up Thursday where the proposed budget will be shown, and then there'll be a public hearing in January. Some of the items on the proposed budget, there's a couple alderness, as I see it, couldn't make the levy go up, which is kind of one of the things we talked about when, when this changed, you know, that they have the ability to do that. Probably the one issue is, it looks like wages are low, and they've been allowed to go low too long, and that's probably going to have to do some catch-up. I think the only discussion we're having is, can we catch it all up at once, or do we have to spread it out a little bit? That's best I can explain it, but the real budget will, should be after Thursday, there'll be the hard dollar, and you guys, everybody will get it, so. I mean, we don't have anything to say about it. I mean, you know, we got one vote out of how many, but I mean.
Doug?
Nothing, sir.
Dean?
I just want to echo what Steve said about the parade and the lights downtown. It's magnificent. Thank you to everyone that was involved in that.
Aaron?
The only thing I had was, they've answered it, was the sidewalk code, so I've got an answer for that, and I was like, let me bring it up again.
Okay. Joe? Okay, and I'll finish up by iterating, reiterating, and I guess we're good at that sort of thing. The downtown parade is a fixture of Oskaloosa's culture, and I thought it was, you know, it's amazing how things improve when you put an exponent on them, like the lighting that's going on there, and just the sense of community. I was lucky enough to be involved with the countdown of those lights coming on, and it's one thing to be standing in the, in the bandstand and seeing those lights come on. What's even more exciting, though, is hearing the crowd yelling with you the countdown for those lights, and the community sense, as everyone is cheering together, that Oskaloosa needs more and more of those things, and I was just very impressed with the folks, the seasonal decoration committee, and Main Street doing their job just so effectively. And before I'd gone there, my wife had shown me that posting from the Main Street Iowa, where they had put, "Our Christmas event is the number one in the state of Iowa," Des Moines came in seven. Not that I wanted to. So, anyway, with that, I guess I would take a motion for adjournment?